I'd like to call to order this work session of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education. Laura, could you please call the roll? Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Niznick.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson, I'll turn it over to you to do the introduction.
Thank you, Board President, Gephardt, members of the board. Last semester, board members, as you will recall, we had some members of our community come to board meetings in regards to elementary lunch periods with some concerns around the amount of time that our elementary students have for lunch. And this is not a new concern. This is a concern that, from my understanding, over the years, has been considered by this district. And we are here tonight to walk you through what you, I think, will find are some of the hidden complexities that really result in the differences in how much time students get at lunches based on facility, based on school, based on program. And so we have lots of information to share, and then there will be time for the board to discuss. I think our hope from this work session is to potentially get future direction on how the board would hope for us to further investigate, or if there's more information that you might need moving forward. So with us today to present on this topic is Rob Price, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations, and Robin Fernandez, our Assistant Superintendent of Schools. And so, Rob, I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Also joining us, and it's on your agenda tonight, is Carolyn Vila, who is on the agenda to prove as our new Director of Food Service. So if we get in a weasel, I'll ask Carolyn to come up, but I wanted her to join us for tonight's conversation. So as Dr. Anderson mentioned, this has been an ongoing conversation in BVSD for a number of years. Most recently, we discussed this when we talked about the Equal School Day and made those changes here a few years back. Hand in hand with the work we have done to improve the food in our cafeterias and expand health and wellness education around good nutrition, we've also looked at the lunch times. CDC recommends 20 minutes to eat once the students are seated. With this additional time, students consume more of their meal, including fruits and vegetables. They have more time to enjoy and digest their food. Food Services also reports that kids are more likely to try new foods when they have more time to eat. This slide here shows you that at the younger grades, you can see this is non-charter, so this is our schools, 14 of our 30 schools provide 20 minutes for kindergarten classes, and 16 of the schools provide 25 minutes. As you work your way up into this intermediate grade, you'll see at grade five, 20 of our schools provide 20-minute lunchtimes, and 10 of our schools provide 25-minute lunchtimes. As noted, board policy outlines our philosophy and practice related to wellness, nutrition, and physical activity. These policies provide guidance for when to schedule lunch and states that it should be an appropriate length of time, but does not dictate a specific length of time for lunch periods. So with that, I'll turn it over to Robin.
Thank you, Robin.
So, good evening, everyone. While we support and encourage schools to plan for 25-minute lunch periods, we know that there are a number of factors that affect the daily schedules in all of our schools. And so this can be tricky and more challenging than one might even think. And I'm going to share some of these factors with you now. So first, the size of a school's cafeteria and the number of students enrolled in any given school are two of the primary factors that affect the number of lunch periods, the number of students that can be in the cafeteria at any time, and subsequently, the length of the lunchtime. So here are just a few general facts. Schools that can fit two grade levels per lunch need fewer lunch periods, and each period can be longer. Schools with smaller cafeterias, therefore, need more lunch periods in order to accommodate all the students enrolled in their schools. Nearly every school can accommodate some overlap of classes in the cafeteria, meaning that they stagger themselves through the lunch line but are seated simultaneously in the cafeteria. Our PK8 schools have, as we know, 10 grades to move through the cafeteria. This sometimes allows for schools to lengthen the lunch period time at elementary grades, but often results in the shortening of lunch periods for middle school lunchtimes. In addition, we often hear from schools that having more students in the lunchtime, especially at our PK8 schools, sometimes can have drawbacks in terms of high noise level and a busier atmosphere, which can be challenging for some students. It also results in the need for more staff supervision. Finally, the types of tables and the layout of the cafeteria can also dictate the number of students who can eat at the same time in a cafeteria. And we do know that tables can be expensive and cafeteria layout can be difficult to change. So this slide illustrates different possible lunch schedules at a variety of our schools and shows different lengths of lunch periods that can impact the overall school schedule. So this graphic allows for five minutes between grades that is used by staff for cleaning, prepping, restocking of supplies, et cetera. It's often the case that a school will schedule the lower grades with a 25-minute lunch period and older students with a 20-minute lunch period, but that is not shown here on this graphic. The conversation that we often have with principals is what time is too early for lunch to begin and what time is too late for students to be able to eat? So you can see that many of the school schedules on this slide show lunch beginning prior to 11:00 a.m. and concluding after 1:00 p.m. So within a school day, there are multiple demands on time. BVSD policy, strategic plan initiatives and priorities, and contract requirements all complete for time in the school day. Specials can be especially problematic as often the school master schedule is developed based on the availability of specials teachers who have to travel among multiple schools during a school day. Just as a reminder, schools provide 55 minutes for specials each day. So as some may remember, several years ago, teachers and leaders in BVSD engaged in work to determine the amount of time during a seven-hour school day that should be dedicated to each aspect of a student's experience. At that time, we identified that a 25-minute lunch period was the standard. But we also know that the complexities that we're discussing here this evening often affect schools' abilities to achieve that. And staffing also is a factor that is part of this overall equation. So it's the staffing of both paraeducators, who are the lunchroom and recess supervisors, and also the food service staff that are part of this puzzle. So paraeducators help out over the lunch period by supervising the cafeteria and also supervising students at recess. They also sanitize tables, clean floors, restock supplies during and between lunch periods. We do know that paraeducator FTE is limited. And any time that parents spend supervising recess or supervising the lunchroom is time that they are not available to support students academically in the classroom. Furthermore, if lunch in any given school runs longer than 2 and 1/2 to 3 hours, food service FTE has to increase to accommodate that additional time for lunch periods, which subsequently causes an increase in operational costs for us. And finally, in order to make longer lunch periods for students, principals do actually often do away with even that five minutes between lunch periods, which obviously impacts the ability to wipe down tables and clean floors and restock supplies. They put lunches as close together as possible, and as I said, often eliminating even just five minutes between lunch periods in order to provide longer lunch periods for students. So many schools have some or all of their students go to recess prior to eating lunch. So when recess is before lunch, recess and eating aren't in competition with each other. But what we know is that when students have recess first, they aren't rushing through their lunches with the goal of getting out to recess. However, what we do hear from staffs and principals and parents is having more time in the cafeteria does not always equate to more eating. One challenge is that schools talk about, and we have heard from schools across the district, that sometimes when a lunch period is longer than 20 minutes, then there is a behavioral management piece that really can often come into play. So just a few examples of how the complexities can come together to intersect with our schools. So one PK8 has lunches that are 25 minutes. However, there are three grades in the cafeteria at once in order to achieve a 25-minute lunch period. And they report that they do pretty consistently hear from students and parents about the loud and high-energy environment, which can be bothersome for some students. Another PK8 has less space, and so lunches are 20 minutes in order to get all of the classes through the cafeteria. Some schools have decided to give longer lunches to younger students, but shorter lunches to students in either grades 3 through 5 or in our PK8 students in middle school. Longer lunches can mean, as we talked about before, that lunch starts earlier. So we know that early lunches are especially difficult to accommodate on Wednesdays after late start. So related to that is that one larger school that we spoke with serves breakfast at 8:50, 8:00 a.m. on Wednesdays during late start, but then starts lunch service just an hour and 40 minutes later at 10:30 a.m. So finally, next school year will bring some even new and different challenging complexities for us to consider. So free food for all students is wonderful, and we're really excited about that. And hopefully, it will lead to increased participation in the school lunch program. But it could result in longer lunch lines, which could affect the amount of time that students have to sit and eat their lunches. Also, full-day preschool is governed by state regulations, which have now informed us that PK students will be allowed to eat in the cafeterias with their peers with students of other grades, which is a huge relief for us. But they must sit at their own tables. And so we're currently working through the implications of what this new information will mean for us and the length of lunch periods and the number of tables that we have in our cafeterias. So we have shared a lot of information with you about the complexities of this challenging topic. But now we are more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Stacy.
Thanks for this. And those of us who have been around a while, this comes up every five or six years or so. And one of my questions for you is, the schools that have recess first, is there any evidence that shows that those families aren't complaining as much or that there seems to be a better flow when there is recess first? Does that help?
That's a great question. So I will share my own anecdotal experience as a principal, and that there's a balance, that you're right. It decreases the competition between food and the desire to get to recess. At the same time, there are students who will, while they are out at recess prior to lunch, say, "I'm so hungry. I'm so hungry." You know, they love being outside. So there's a definite balance to that. So in terms of specific data about individual schools, no, I don't believe that we've collected that.
Yes, thanks for this presentation. Didn't mean to make that noise. So I'm looking at slide number eight that has all the minutes for every activity. And so it looks like, including with lunch, lunch recess, and another recess, that's 75 minutes. Is that correct? A 25-minute, I'm guessing morning recess? Yes, but here's 25-minute recess and then two numbers down, 50-minute lunch/recess.
So this definitely varies by school. Every school's master schedule is developed at the school site. So again, many of the master schedules are dependent on the schedules of the traveling specials teachers. But very often, recess and lunch together creates a 40, 45, 50-minute total period of time.
Right, but then there's still a recess? There's still a recess before that? Looking at the slide, it's got recess listed twice. And just, you know, back in 100 years ago when I taught, we had morning recess in elementary and then lunch, and then afternoon recess. Is that what this is, morning recess? Because it seems like you could take some time off that.
Well, especially in the primary grades, many, if not most, of our elementary schools have at least one additional recess in addition to lunchtime. And what they find is that the balance between in-class learning and the need to move and be outside and socialize is something that they're trying to accommodate throughout the period of the day. So there tends to be less recess time as they move through the grades. And then very often in fifth grade, the only recess is at lunchtime.
Is that all kidding? I understand Lisa has a question.
Hi, all. I think I'm supposed to tell you that I'm joining from my house. So let's see here. I appreciate this presentation. I think when I look at the 20 minutes, I think about how these lunchtimes go. And then like, if you're, for example, the last kid in line, and then maybe like my kids, you're a vegetarian or you can't eat gluten, so you go through the whole line to find out that there's nothing for you maybe on that day. And then you go to the salad bar to try and make a meal out of that. And then you sit down, and there's like 10 minutes at this point, and the last couple will be bussing your tray. That's like eight minutes for kids to eat. And when I'm thinking about, when I'm thinking about the fact that it takes me like an hour of cajoling to get my kids to normally eat a meal, the idea that they're going to do it at school in eight minutes, I think, is not super reasonable. I know when I send them with home food, I prefer to do the school meals because y'all do great stuff. But when they beg me for home meals, usually they're coming home 75% to 90% of what we sent with them. And every time when I'm asking them, they're saying there just wasn't any time. And what I'm worrying about, and what I hear other parents worrying about, is like, it doesn't matter how great the quality of our instruction is, it doesn't matter how amazing our lesson plans are, if our kids are too tired and too hungry to get through them over the course of a standardized seven-hour day, then we're not really accomplishing what we intend to. And I do hear you saying that this is incredibly complicated. I have no doubt that that's true. But it's also the case, I know that you all have done amazing things. For example, during COVID, when we had to find lunchtime solutions. And I don't have the solutions here, but I do know my kids aren't having enough time to eat. I know that it's affecting the way they behave and learn in school. And I wonder if there are any kinds of creative solutions we can come up with that can give even five or 10 more minutes for kids to try and get through this.
So I'm actually super glad that you asked that because it's important to point out that if students don't finish eating, they aren't forced to leave the cafeteria. So if students aren't able to eat their meal or if they've had a little difficulty, as you've possibly alluded to, in the lunch line, students can continue to eat until they have finished eating their lunch and until they express they are no longer wanting to continue to eat more. So principals and cafeteria staffs have routines that they engage in every single day in order to accommodate that for students. So that's a great point to point out. In addition, our classroom teachers do also have both identified time for snack or also have routines that they have implemented in their classrooms so that if students are hungry and have a snack, that there are times during the day if they are hungry, either before lunch or after lunch, morning or afternoon, that they are able to eat a snack in that environment.
Well, thanks. I'm sorry. I'm sure other folks have questions, but I do want to respond. My kids definitely eat snacks, but two Z bars and an apple a day is not getting them through seven hours of education. If we have a policy that kids can stay in the lunchroom and finish their meals instead of going to class, I've never heard that before. And I would say that my kid who's sitting a foot away from me right now with the stomach flu is telling me that he's never heard that before. And my assumption is that if we respond to all of these parents who've written in to us, they've never heard that before. So I'm not sure if this is a disconnect between administration in our schools or where it is. But I've never heard of a policy that kids can just stay in the cafeteria and finish their food. And I've heard repeatedly from my kids that nothing like that is available.
Anything else, Lisa?
No, just that those are my concerns. And I think if we're going to end this study session today, like I would love us to have some of these ongoing conversations with other parents. I obviously can't speak as a monolith for all of the elementary school parents. But I can say I understand why we get these emails and that I find it concerning as well. And I would love us maybe to do some more engagement around what other people's experiences are if we think that there are solutions on the table that can be utilized. And if there aren't, that feels like a great place to start.
Beth, and then Nicole.
First of all, I just want to thank you guys for this presentation. I really appreciate it. It came from a conversation, as Lisa alluded to, from our community. Community reaching out to us repeatedly, asking questions about it. And it sounds like it does come up every few years. So I really appreciate the responsiveness to that. And it's absolutely complex. And I'm a little concerned that it's going to get complexer, more complex, with the addition of free food, which is fabulous, of course. But unfortunately, like that's going to probably increase lunch lines, right? And extend the amount of time our kiddos are in the lunchroom. So for me, I agree. I don't know what the solution is. I don't know exactly what we can do from exactly here. But something that would help me kind of unpack the problem would be getting some more concrete numbers around the cost. And I'm kind of trying to make eye contact with Bill, because that will be in his department, around the cost of making a change. You know, if we're going to need to extend FTE for food service or paraeducators, what does that look like? How many schools would be impacted? Certainly not all of our schools, right? What are the numbers? And so I would love more data about that in the future.
Nicole.
Thanks for that presentation. Couple things that rise to the top for me. When we had free meals for all of our students, we did have higher rates of participation, and students were able to actually move through those lines faster, particularly at our elementary grade levels, because they didn't have to put their numbers in those keypad. And so it is going to, we're going to have to, I feel like, wait and see what happens with participation with the rollout of universal free meals once again, and then also the impacts of preschool. We don't know what the current, what conditions are going to look like next year. And I feel uncomfortable moving toward any change until we have a really good grasp of what that looks like. I think when we start to see that happen, it would be great to get some information on how much time students actually do have to eat if we're setting the gold standard as 20 minutes with food. Some, you know, potentially looking at if it's the will of the board, some studies on how quickly people are moving through and can sit there. I know my kids went to Foothill Elementary, and they had a courtyard that kids, upper grades, can overflow into for lunch. There are some flexible spaces where older kids have the privilege of eating lunch. So as we have declining enrollment and extra space in our facilities outside of a classroom, is that a possibility? I don't know, but there are a lot of things that are moving. As we heard last week, as we continue here, we'll hear again tonight, our budget is not infinite. And we have to make some hard decisions and some trade-offs and be really honest with ourselves and with our public about where those are going to occur. And the cafeterias, physical space, staffing, those are big costs that we need to take into consideration amongst everything else we're trying to do in this district. So I'm also really sensitive to that. So for me personally, I would love some time to see what happens in the years to come. And in the meantime, because you did such a great job of looking at all of our policies that relate to this, most of them are really outdated and will be outdated with the language of, with universal free meals. So I think there are some efforts that we can, steps we can start making to think about the processes and how we approach these meals. But there's a lot of variables, and I'd like to see how some of those play out before we make any big changes.
Richard, and then Stacy. Okay, Stacy and then Richard.
Along with what Nicole said, I think it'd also be helpful to find out from those schools that do recess first if it's actually working better. Because I know that was what came out of, when this came up five or six years ago, that some moved to recess first. And then we hadn't heard about it, you know, for like three or four years. I know some of that was COVID. But I think it'd be helpful to find out from those schools that do recess first if they have a similar experience or if things are going better as part of this.
Richard.
Thank you for the presentation. It was good information. But it brings up a lot of questions, obviously. And I know it's a complex problem. And it's been a complex problem for years. I had the privilege to work at University Hill Elementary School, also at the old Washington Bilingual Elementary School, and at the old Aurora Seven Elementary School as a family resource school coordinator. And my privilege was to be in the cafeteria a lot of the times when kids were eating lunch. And there are some very, very complex issues. And this whole issue of lunch or recess before lunch has always been a big deal with a lot of families. And my question is, have we done any kind of study, whether through observation or whatever, as it relates to how much food is going to waste because of the fact that there is that competition where kids are in a hurry to eat lunch and then go to recess? They usually skip their lunch in many instances. And they don't eat their lunch. They just throw it away. And I saw that happen a lot, where our garbage cans were full of the food that they're supposed to be eating and all of that, okay? So that would be one question that I would have in terms of, let's do more work around the waste of food. If in fact, there's any, I'm sure there is, how much is it for schools that have recess before lunch and those schools that have lunch before recess? Okay, what's that look like? And this whole issue about lunch before recess, because even if you look at any particular given elementary school, it seems to me like the recess is within that 25-minute span. Lunch and recess are included in that 25-minute span. Is that correct? No? So how much time do they have for recess after they got lunch?
It's a total of 50 minutes, depending on how much time for the, if it's 20 minutes for recess, five minutes of passing period means that they have 25 minutes for lunch. Does that make?
Thanks for that.
Yeah, total of 50 minutes. I believe that is written in board policy if I...
Okay. So it is a complex issue. And my question to you all is, what can we do that's reasonable to fix this issue? You're bringing us a big problem. What is it that we can do to fix this particular issue so that kids are eating, parents are content and happy that their kids are eating? Because you're going to have them all over the place. You know, the lunch before recess or recess before lunch folks, I mean, they've been here before. They've been in front of us complaining about that, okay?
So one sec, Rob. I think what we're hearing is we need more data. So we aren't going to be able to make a decision tonight. And I think we've heard some good ideas for where we need the data, and we need time. And then we need to prioritize, to Nicole and Beth's point. I think, is this the most important priority? I don't know. We're going to have to hear from the staff and from the community to figure out where this fits in our budget. So I'll turn it over to you, Rob, because I think we can't make a decision. I don't see in the, at least by the end of the school year, maybe even beginning of next school year, because there's a lot of information that we still need. And I think this is a good starting point.
So the good news is, in 10 of our schools, it looks like we have, this isn't an issue, right? And what I'm hearing from the board, and part of today's presentation was to get further direction to number one, to really be honest about the complexities, right? Board members, sometimes there's problems and issues that are as easy as a policy change or a, we're just going to give folks this direction and this will happen consistently, and then it's a management expectation. But what I think you've heard tonight is that in some schools, it's space. In some schools, it's number of students. In some schools, it's a labor shortage issue. And then in... And then in some schools, they have so many grades, and adding a grade, it's, are we serving brunch and dinner? Right? I mean, to the extent that you're trying to squeeze all of those things in. And I don't know that there's one decision that this board can direct us to make, or one decision as superintendent, I could say, do this. It almost looks like there could potentially be 20 different individual solutions that could be bucketed into certain areas, that could have certain fiscal commitments. For example, if it's okay, we'll just hire the staff up, right, to be able to manage the lunchroom. Or if, you know, if we're gonna have too many kids, if you overcrowd any space, and we see this all the time with class sizes, where, you know, kids and parents and others think there's too many kids in a classroom at one point in time, right, then you have to, you know, put more resources to solve for that. So in any event, I do think that it is a, it's gonna take some time to really get into what the solutions would be at individual schools. I would say that, you know, we have unique perspective with a couple of our board members as parents and board members, former employee, knowing and understanding how this is actually impacting, you know, their families. So what I'm hearing the board say is, number one, you need to continue to think about this. We're not telling you to do anything. Look and investigate some proposed solutions, maybe even talk to some families. See, is this as much of a not enough time? Or if you put recess before lunch versus after lunch, that that maybe potentially eases some of the concerns? Although I would say that there could be potential fiscal commitments to that as well, if schools don't have enough playgrounds, if we have to alter some of our specialists, which, by the way, are really important to making our master schedules work and oftentimes dictate when things happen, when those folks are available to maximize the efficiencies there. So as you can see, we wanted to make sure that, A, we brought this forward to the board and the community, we're continuing to think about this. This isn't just a make it happen, make one decision. It's a series of investigations and then decisions. What I'm hearing is that the board would want us to spend staff time further investigating this as a first commitment, and then potentially thinking about, A, how does having another whole grade in all of our schools make this even more complicated? And then what would the proposed solutions potentially be? If there are going to be dollar commitments, right, I would say that unless we were to bring something, the earliest we'd be able to bring something to you all is mid-year, next year. I mean, we've already presented you a budget, and so that, this is not considered in that. And so that would give us some time, potentially between now and the fall, to begin to ask some more questions, collect some more information, dig into this idea that there may be inconsistency amongst schools in regards to what our understanding is in that if a kid needs to continue to eat, you let them continue to eat, and that that's signaled as such. And it's not done one way at one school and another way in another school. You know, maybe we can kind of check in with our leaders on that. And so, you know, certainly some work to do, but I think we're up for the task to continue investigating.
Richard?
Just very quickly, snacks. Are the snacks provided by the district, or do parents have to provide their own snacks?
No, students bring their own snacks.
I just want to say too, that as far as priorities are concerned, I think nutrition is a high priority in my, in where I'm sitting. And if the kids aren't eating, and if they're not, you know, if they don't have the energy and all of that wonderful stuff that they need to do to be able to concentrate on their studies, I don't think of anything else as a higher priority than making sure that we get this right, in terms of making sure the kids are eating. And if it's gonna cost more money, by golly, let's look at that and see what we can do to make it right. But I think, I don't think that I want to shirk the responsibility of not making it a priority because it's gonna cost more money.
Kitty, and then Nicole.
So are there any schools that have lunch before recess that have a specified time when that class goes to recess, rather than eat as fast as you can so you can get out the door? And if so, does that make a difference?
So, yes, there are schools that have, some or all of their students that go to recess before lunch, but generally, it is a mixture because it's part of that overall flow of recess. And some students are at recess while some are in the lunchroom, and then they switch. So that does occur at some, yeah, at all of our schools to some degree or another.
But what I asked was, for the ones who have lunch first, because one of the problems with lunch first, we're hearing from parents, is kids are really eager to get outside, you know, even if they have gone through the lunch line fast enough. And so if, say, they go into lunch at noon, and they cannot leave until 12:20, for example, regardless of when they finish, does that make a difference? And I don't, I have no idea if there are schools that do that or not. But if we're talking about making sure they're there long enough and that they still have recess.
Yeah, that is how it is, actually. When a group of students has a specific period of time for lunch, they remain in the cafeteria through that period of time before that class or that grade level goes outside to recess.
Nicole?
I guess, I just wanted to reiterate that you shared that time does not always equate to food consumption. And I experienced that with my own kids. I refuse to send them with school lunches because I would spend too much time packing them, and they would come home with ample time to eat, mostly uneaten. And so there is that social factor that comes into play, so more time isn't gonna guarantee more food. I also wanted to share my slight discomfort in trying to micromanage individual school schedules, where we have allowed schools' latitude to do what they think is best. I could see, I'd feel more comfortable with something in policy that said, schools shall make the best effort to provide at least X amount of minutes. But to micromanage, I don't know if that's within our scope. I don't know if that's something we plan on doing as a board with our secondary school levels also, because it, when does it stop? So I'm trying to hold space for that. Like, what is our role here? And how can we do what's best for students within that and not be micromanagers of individual schools that have a lot of variables and considerations that need to be taken?
Stacy?
I was gonna make a similar comment about the schedules of each school. I feel uncomfortable also mandating how they do that. I agree with Nicole, if there was some blanket policy about how much time should be or best effort. But as a board, we don't get involved in the scheduling of each school and their, any of it. And so I feel uncomfortable with that, too.
Lisa, do you have anything else?
No, no, I think I said all I have.
And Richard, all I'm trying to suggest is, we have a lot of competing priorities. Of course, nutrition is one, but so is translation, so are class sizes, so are all of the things that we're gonna have to be balancing. Until we know the numbers and the impact, it's hard to know where we're gonna land on that. And we know we're not gonna have the same amount of dollars we're gonna have going forward. So, Rob, do you have what you need?
I believe so. If I hear the board, this is something that is a topic that the board cares about, our community cares about. I think that the board recognizes the complexity. I think that I respect the Nicole and Stacy's comments in regards to making decisions without making another problem, right? You could, you know, you mandate something, right, around food, and then a school gives up something else that people loved to do that, and then you could potentially have another problem that's coming in front of this board. So I'm mindful of that. I don't know that that's not a reason to continue to investigate, what could we do? I mean, I think options in regards to knowing and understanding, if it's just, if you could solve it with a dollar amount, what would that be? I think that that's something that would be, would give the board information to make decisions, or for the district, for that matter. What could a policy look like that's shared best practice? And what could a policy look like for kids and families who feel like that their kids aren't getting what they need from this opportunity? And so maybe it's fixing those that feel like they aren't getting what they need versus trying to fix the whole thing. I think that those would be things that we would be looking at. I appreciate our community's engagement on this, board's engagement. Thanks to Rob, Carolyn, Robin, and staff for putting in some pretty significant time to gather this information and clearly lay out the issue. And let us take this back to our team, think about potentially, you know, what was shared here tonight, and try to figure out a path moving forward to, to see what would be the first step in moving this in the right direction.
And maybe, Rob, during fall prioritization, we could revisit where we could fit this in, because you'll have a little better sense of...
Sure.
Kind of where we are, if that makes sense to the board.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, any last questions? All right, thank you. Next up, I believe we have Kathleen and Lynn. Rob, all that coming up, do you wanna do the introduction?
Thank you, Kathy. I would love to do that. And so our second work session this evening is in regards to student fees. This came up in prioritization. I would say, board members, you're going to kind of hear a current state today of student fees and a plan moving forward. You're not going to hear a solution to where we are with proposed fees, because I do believe that our team feels like there's work to be done here. And so with that, I'm gonna turn this over to legal counsel Kathleen Sullivan, our Director of Academic Services, Lynn Gershman.
Good evening, President Gephardt and BVSD school board members. This review of Policy JN will support the positive and inclusive culture of our strategic plan. The intent of the fees policy revision is to eliminate as many fees as possible for families while not losing the integrity of any of our programs. You can see that we have 432 fees listed on our fees document. These include approved fees, though not or all assessed each year or by each teacher. And many of the fees are outdated, and we just haven't, we've added to our fees list rather than taken any away. If you compare this to other districts, you'll see that we have far greater number of fees than other districts, but that's only because they have reorganized their fee policies and lists by programs rather than by courses or by school.
So like many areas that the board works in, this area is governed by state law, which establishes several principles. First of all, fees can't be charged as a condition for enrollment in a school or as a condition of attendance in any class. The fees have to be reasonably necessary and reasonably related to the actual cost. They need to be used for the designated purpose and not expended for any other purpose. And then, for transparency purposes, the law requires that we have available upon request, a list of fees, the amount of each fee and how it was derived, the purpose, whether the fee is mandatory or voluntary, and specifying any activity from which the student would be excluded if the fees are not paid. So that's existing Colorado law. Our current board policy, I think, has not been touched since 19, is it 78 or 92? Okay, 92. I feel like we've talked about a lot of policies lately. It's a lawyer's dream, I think. So we haven't updated it since 1992, but it does establish several core board beliefs as well as implementing law. It does explain that it's this board's expectation that students receive free textbooks. It requires that class fees and library fees and locker fees and assembly fees, which I don't think are included on our list, are addressed in the operating budget. It clearly establishes that we don't charge students as a disciplinary response, which is not something that I'm aware has ever been attempted, but that's clearly established in the policy. And then importantly, it does establish the expectation that the district waive fees for students who are eligible for meal benefits and, as determined by the principal, based on need. So we have a number of suggested changes to the new policy. I think, as the board knows in the last presentation addressed, we're really at the point in the year where budgets are in. They have been calculated, and we've asked our staff to really look at their budgets. So our plan, as Lynn will explain on the next slide, is to make sure that we reiterate the board's beliefs for these policies and make sure those are implemented as we start next year, and that we adopt a new policy in the fall. And we come back to the board next January with a much shorter list of fees. For now, what we are expecting is that we will update the policy with new definitions, make it more modern, reflecting all of the state law requirements, and then, as I said, roll in changes over the next year. We will continue, our recommendation would be to continue with the board approving a cap on what a fee could be, and then authorizing our principals to really work expressly with teachers and make sure that their itemized fees fit within the board's policy. Getting to Lynn's point of the difference between approved and assessed, what the board approves, the principal then needs to make sure that that assessment still fits within the board policy. It's our recommendation that we determine fees by program rather than course, like our neighbor districts have done, and that we provide those clear, individualized explanations as to what the fees are. As I already said, I think it's critical, and I know our principals work hard at making sure that the waiver process is clear and accessible to families. And finally, then, we establish fee caps, and we address any fees that would create a barrier for our students' participation in a course or activity.
So this is our timeline to review our fee policy. The 23, 24 fees are in the consent agenda tonight and linked here for your perusal. Once we have an approved set of fees for next year, this summer, we could start with the policy revision and do some fee consolidation, as well as eliminate some fees that are outdated or just aren't relevant anymore to some of our courses. After we create a new list, we would gather feedback with TAC and DAC and any stakeholders that are interested. For the October board meeting, we would adopt the revised Policy JN, and then align the fees with the adopted policy as new courses change fees process starts again in September, October, which would then put us back on the cadence of new courses, new fees, and changed fees for the January Board of Ed adoption process. We'd love to take your questions.
Lisa?
Thanks. I think when we're talking about fee caps that's by class, do we also have caps on how much a family can be expected to spend per student or per family annually?
We do have an activity participation fee cap that's in place of $405 with respect to activities. I'm not aware of a cap for curricular.
I don't really have a sense of whether that's useful, but if it's worth considering, I just wanted to toss out there that especially for our larger families, I'm not sure how deep they get in the hole with some of this, and maybe it's worth putting a limit, but maybe not.
Richard? Lisa, was that it? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's it. Like I said, I don't have kids who are really dealing with this yet, but it just occurs to me that you do this in other areas, and if it feels useful to consider, I just wanted to toss that out.
Okay, Richard?
Yeah, one, one of the things that caught my eye here was the, the, where you talk about, where you suggested changes, determine fees by program, not by course, and provide clear and individualized explanations, continue with clear waiver process. The waiver process is for kids that participate in free and reduced, is that, is that what I'm reading here? Well, we know that the cost of living in Boulder is so extremely high that even people that do not, are not eligible for free and reduced lunch, need some fee waivers. Is there any way that we can do that to kind of polish that up in our, I guess, in our, in our policy, too, you know?
Yes, I think we do need to clarify that in our policy. I can tell you, we, we paid a lot of attention to this this year because of the meal benefits, and there are a lot of regulations around how you use that information for fee waivers. So we've done a lot of work with our principals to make sure that they understand that fee waivers starts with meal benefits eligible families, but is available to any family that has a need for a fee waiver. So it isn't exclusive to meal benefits, and we'll certainly work to make that clear.
And just another question, in terms of the actual fees that we're going to be approving tonight? I went down the CTE fees, and I noticed that there's one particular CTE, if you will, which is your hairstylist, your nail, whatever. That's extremely high. I mean, and I don't know whether all the students that are taking that particular professional career have to take all of these classes or not, but I made the, the additions, and they're pretty close to $1,000 that a person would have to pay.
So, yeah, that's one of our areas where we will be consolidating the fees and putting a cap. I think the fee that you are probably talking about is for personal training, which is a new certification program that we have, and the fee is $380. I'm well aware of that fee, as is the principal. Basically, here's how we're going to handle that next year. Because it's a new certification program, we don't have any funds from previous certificates to pay for the students who want to take that area of study. So we're going to borrow the money from another program to get the program going, to start it off, so that any kid who wants to participate in that, there's no barrier to entry. And then as soon as the certificate money that comes back from the state will repay the other, it's probably going to be auto, will repay those funds, and then that program will be self-sustaining. With our CTE programs, what we're hoping to do is make sure that they are self-sustaining if it's a certification program. When it's not a certification program, like nails or hairstyling, there are some fees, but those will be capped. At, what I'm thinking of is $50, just to pay for the equipment or the nail polish and things like that, the consumable items.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nicole?
Thank you for this presentation. I completely understand the need for us to assess fees to ensure we are providing, you know, high-quality programming that our families are expecting and cover the cost of these consumables. I like the plan that you guys have laid out. I think it's really clear, I think it'll get us to a better point and place. And I wonder if part of that process is putting a little bit more thought in the hows and whys and whens we charge fees? Like, are some of the things for which we assess fees necessary to the, to the academic program? Do we need to have purchased shirts for choir and middle school, or can they all wear the same color? So being more thoughtful about when we charge students, and if there's an alternate way, or if the product really has to be consumed, do we need to annotate in every book in English? Maybe, I don't know, but if we, if there are alternatives to having some fees assessed, I think that'd be really great to look at. So I like the direction we're going here. I wanted to bring people, your attention to the fact that Jeff Co charges $75 a semester for busing. That was an interesting for buses. And so I, different districts do different things. And I, when we look at our fees and where we decide to go, I would like to have a sense of, when we're choosing caps, how do they fall within our neighboring districts? And what is, is the range of which we're charging and collecting on par with what our neighboring school districts are doing? Again, to make sure we're providing those robust experiences and the consumables that some of our programs have come to expect, not overcharging our, our students, and really being aligned with what is going on elsewhere. So those are just some things I, like, I still got in October.
Kitty?
So I have a couple of questions, because, so some of the fees are voluntary and some are mandatory, but I, and I know you can get any fee waived. So tell me about fees that are voluntary and who volunteers to pay them?
I think that's something that we really have to address in the definitions section, and to Board Member Raj Paul's point, looking at how our neighboring districts classify those. I think even mandatory fees can be waived when you look at our fellow dis, at our neighboring districts and the way they describe those. So I think that's going to be part of our important work for really defining what that means, but any fee that is a barrier for a student can be waived.
Yes, and I did know that, and I 100% agree with that. So when fees are not paid, where, I mean, you told us where the money for personal training comes from, but where does the money to pay for that expense come from? If, say you have 10 kids in a class and whose fees were waived for the lab fees or whatever?
I think that's hard to, to, to pinpoint exactly. Like, we don't have an unpaid fees budget where we put dollars in. I do think that it's really important for us to hone in on why we charge the fees that we do, and where is the dollars for those fees going, and how are those dollar amounts considered and determined? And are we charging too much in fee? Like, I, I think there's a lot that needs to go into this. I don't know that I have a good answer to your question right now. I think that, like in many ways, we just figure out ways to make things work, and whether it's from schools who have SRA accounts, because we give them dollars per student at our high schools, sometimes it gets pulled from them, sometimes it might get pulled from fundraising, sometimes donations. I think there's lots of different sources that, where those dollars can come from.
Lynn, I just wanted to clarify about the personal training certificate. The state gives the district money for that?
For certain CTE programs, there is a money back when students earn their certificates, and that does change from time to time. But yeah, we get money back for every kid who earns a certificate from the state CTE grants.
That's good to hear.
It's awesome.
Did you have something else, Nicole?
So oftentimes when fees are asked of for parents in RevTrack or where else, there's an option to donate to cover the cost of somebody else's fees. Is that something that's codified in our policy anywhere, or is that just something, a practice we've established in this district? Or, you know, that comes up a lot, as somebody that pays fees and donates fee. The where, and is that going to continue, and should it be codified or not, is my question?
I'm not sure if it's in policy or not, but I do think that if we were, if we have adopted a practice as such, that it should be.
And related to that is, when can you do fundraising for fees? I don't think the policy addresses that necessarily, but it might be helpful to put that in there as well, just because of the potential inequalities from school to school for doing that. So, Rob, do you have what you need? Anybody else?
No, I think we have what we need. Appreciate the discussion and look forward to getting this policy in place by next year where we can move forward.
Yes, good work as always, so thank you very much for your time, and, and look forward to the update on this. Board members, a five-minute break, and then I know we're going to start a few minutes late, and we apologize to our guests, but we ran a little over on our work session, so we'll try to make it as close to five minutes as we can.